Called me during the order, could I get a question? Don't be second session.
Okay.
Second, I'm favorite on the executive. I think my thing. Alright. Second say. Sorry, we have second of the office. So you please stand for the collective allegiance and indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nick, did you lead us in education, please?
Sure. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much that we can gather publicly and we have the right to gather and be in public together. We ask for you to watch over this meeting tonight, watch over our elected officials as they make decisions that shape so many laws. Send a spirit of unity and peace over this meeting and guide us as we all travel back home and see. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. So first on the agenda, we're going to recognize the Tassel Girls, New Elite State Champions. So I've got a little information here that I wanted to read from. I did have the opportunity to go watch these young ladies play. And I tell you, to watch some girls with some grit and just playing some hard softball, it was just amazing to watch. They'd start off down and then they'd find a way to dig deeper and come back and win some games and it was nice. And one even took a concussion for the team, so.
Broken nose, dude.
And a broken nose. So some of their standings, let's see. And I got this here. Or Coach, why don't you come up and just kind of tell council some of their record and everything, who they beat?
Well, in our district, we only had to play one team go to state, Clinch River. We went undefeated there. In state, we played, there were six teams, I think. We went undefeated there. Regions, there were seven teams. Virginia, West Virginia, Florida, South Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, North Carolina. We sent South Carolina home, Florida home, and Tennessee home. We were actually two wins away from World Series, so we were really close. We lost to the eventual region winner by one run, so we were close. But tough region for girls. It didn't start overnight, but from T-ball up until now. So there's always a process and what they accomplished is part of that process.
You good? We'd like to ask the coaches and the young ladies to come up. We do have some gifts for them, so if you want to come up, we'll give you pictures up front, too.
Sounds like you did that.
We're done? So everybody can give them round.
You was there, wasn't you?
Yeah. So next, we're going to recognize the Tassel Little League All-Star Team, who had a great season in themselves. I was going to read the long list that Daniel sent me, but I'm going to call on their coach to come up and do the same thing, but. Got to spread the wealth a little bit.
Alright, so our district, they went undefeated in Grundy. We went to state, only lost to Chesterfield, which ended up representing Virginia and Georgia. They lost to Loudon 4-1. Loudon was the number two team, lost in the championship. Only gave up 11 runs on the entire year. So they did a great job and I think posted 100 points, but scored.
It's amazing, we got two teams here that are beating teams that have thousands of kids to pull for. In our small, little community, we're able to put some of the best baseball, softball players that we've seen. Congratulations. If you guys will come, we'll do the same thing we did with the ladies. And either team, if you have players that didn't make it, I can give the same things to your coaches and we'll make sure they get theirs also.
Split, or is that done?
Just a little bit. There we go. Alright, if we can give them another round. So you are free to leave or you can stay in Georgia.
I'm thinking of staying.
I'll get the runner, I'll get the stuff. Alright, so next on our agenda is the introduction of the new executive director for the Tassel County Chamber of Commerce, Lieutenant Magic Killen.
Boy, have I stood here with the morality of half. The truth is, the very first grant I ever wrote was for the Chamber of Commerce, for marketing grant for October 5th, that first year. And the very first event I ever organized was for the Chamber of Commerce. We did First Fridays in partnership with the Town Council, Chamber of Commerce. So longtime member, longtime collaborator. Still recovering from my twisted arm. That's the joke I'm telling everybody because I was reluctant to step into that role. I have a whole lot on my plate still, but let me give it my best shot. The Town Council has had a long time partnership with the Chamber. We've collaborated on all kinds of fun stuff and serious stuff. And primary role of the Chamber is to promote commerce in Tassel County, not just the Town Council, but with our county, Black Chamber. And to provide support to small businesses. So I want to tell you that we have an event happening here in this room on September 19th.
It's at the train station.
The train station? Okay, at the train station. Next month, it's in the Richland's Town Hall, for Richland, Tassel Township. We're at the train station.
On what day?
September 19th. And that's going to be a business bridge hour. And we send out invitation to everybody. I hope you guys will come because we want to be able to connect our business owners to you and to resources, financial and otherwise, that they may not be aware of. You know that we have Oktoberfest coming up. That is October 5th. It's always the first Saturday in October. And we're just always appreciative of the support of the town. Welcome with Donnie on the logistics and all that. You'll see a lot of activism here in the next couple of months. So we've seen 3,000 people at Oktoberfest before, so we're hoping we can pull at least that many this year. COVID dealt quite the blow for Oktoberfest, but this is the year we can get it back on track. Do you guys have any questions for me about the Chamber?
You're doing a good job. The way you keep talking to me.
What time is that on the 19th?
12:20.
12:20, okay. It's, yeah, and we provide lunch. Okay. I'm probably, I just want to get it on my calendar. Yeah, we'd love for you guys to be there. Well, I don't know, we don't want to break the rules, but.
Yeah.
Well, if we're not discussing council stuff, I think we can be in the same room with each other.
Might be hard. Don't just split up your time, you know? You've got 30 minutes.
You're doing a great job. You can talk aside if you need. Grants and, you're doing a great job.
I appreciate the question. I want to put my other hat on for just a second there. About, actually I have two hats on at the moment. Main Street Merchants Group, we're, we're on a couple of fundraisers for fall. And we're going to do a confident walking tour of Main Street. Dr. Muller, he was always on that tour. Yeah, so we're excited about that. And then we're going to do our New Jersey Ball Club again.
Can we secure the?
Who's going to be the main street?
Greta Burton.
Okay, I'm, I'm, she here?
She's not here, but Joey Liewelwood is the vice president.
Yeah, I was trying to, it's like Whipple, Whipple's Thomas, too. They're pretty good. Like $5 a bottle of chili.
Like chili cook-off?
Cook-off, yeah. That's what I'd like to see happen up here in town. Change a little bit. That's a good thing to do. Chili, you know, you come up here.
Are you going to be the judge?
I will.
Last hat. On behalf of Sharon Thomas, who we all may not know, we were awarded the $399,000 grant for the Tassel Center. Sharon couldn't be here, so we wanted to thank you all for agreeing to be the applicant and the physical agent for that. Remember that's the I R F grant and loan program, so.
Fantastic, that's fantastic.
And please, come out to the theater and check it out. They've been out there, I think you guys will be happy to see what we have.
I'll be back down there.
Okay, we'll be watching movies and everything.
I showed up, I walked through the place, it's nice.
You just bring up the location.
I just walked down there, said, "Come in."
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
So next on our agenda is the PBS Appalachia documentary, I'm Class of 19th and So Misery, Mr. Wilson. I had the good opportunity to talk with Mr. Wilson about this during Main Street moments. So now you all get to hear about it.
I take one, you all, so hand down. I didn't feel old until Jerry was explaining to me to talk on this different one. And then he was telling me that he taught all the grand, the mothers, parents, all the great children that went on your list. And then he reminded me that the leading mother is being grandmother is becoming so important. So I felt with me, some class members, as well as Nathan and Shannon. Shannon with PBS, and they're very deserving as our foundation president. And we're just going to try to make this, but thank you for inviting me to come, the mayor, the town council, and fellow citizens that are here. We're here to share with you the remarkable journey of the Centennial Class of 1973, which recently celebrated the 50th reunion on September the 8th of 2023. The seats for something truly special were planted some 18 months ago during a meeting at the Historical Society, where the idea of a documentary about our class first took root. As we shared our collective stories, it became clear that we had something worthy of preserving, something that would resonate with the people of Tassel and for generations to come, and Southwest Virginia. Determined to capture the essence of our class, I set out on a journey to record as many of my classmates' stories as possible. This journey took me over 4,784 miles, including a flight to Kentucky, in pursuit of what I believe is a piece of history. There was no set agenda, but one thing stood out. This is where I get emotional. The Class of 1973 had truly embodied its class motto, "Today we follow, tomorrow we lead." As part of our reunion efforts were also recognized, the need to update our 10- and 20-year reunion books. One about time to do that than a 50-year reunion. From the day ahead of then to now, it's clear that our class has left a significant footprint in our beloved town and beyond. Here's what I've learned and what I believe is crucial to leveraging our memories to build a stronger economic future. 39% of our classmates resided within the Tassel and North Tassels of Coates. 46% live within Tassel County. 68% remain in the Commonwealth of Virginia. 53% of our class has some sort of secondary education. Our journey through life has been rich and diverse. We've traveled the world, raised our families, worked in our respective careers, forged lifelong friendships, embraced challenges, and created countless cherished memories. But no matter where we've gone, this is another, you get me? Tassel remains the heartbeat of our lives. The community we were raised in, the churches we belong to, the parents who guided us, the schools we attended, and most importantly, the teachers who inspired us and taught us how to sing. The diverse perspectives within our class embodied the belief that together, we could undoubtedly make a meaningful impact in solving world peace. Our class sponsor, Amy Dennison, many of you all remember her. I feel like challenged us that this is just one last project. Tassel is the jewel of the Clinch, but the peak of our collective experiments. Our story is one that unifies and celebrates what this town should be proud of. We hope you will support our partnership with PBS in telling our story. Additionally, I'd like to note that we are collaborating with the Virginia Historical Society to preserve our original documentary and individual interviews. The updated book, I think I shared that with you, will be copyrighted to the Library of Congress, ensuring that our legacy is preserved for future generations. And the PBS involvement, we'll be doing something that has never been done before. Thank you for your time and for your continued support of our efforts to honor the past, celebrate the present, and inspire the future. I'd like for our president, if he would like to speak, and also Shannon, to give some words to.
Absolutely. I know some of you. And I'm just going to speak from my heart. This endeavor, this not-for-profit foundation that we put together at the encouragement of a lot of people, means a lot to us and we feel like it means a lot to our community. And we're taking it very seriously. We're spending a lot of time putting it together, making it work. And I just wanted to talk, probably, about what it means to me. Because I've had a very active, very wild life. Let's just put it this way, all over the country, all over Latin America. I left Tassel not, well, physically because my chosen career path didn't have a path here. But my heart didn't go anywhere. My heart stayed here. And all the way from Panama City to Mexico City to San Diego, California, people have heard about Tassel and about what it means. That legacy is what made me who I am. And I can tell you all my classmates the same thing. It's incredible. Like I said, I've been everywhere and I've never seen it like I've seen it here. Education Debbie mentioned, and I'm going to briefly say something about that. My kids, I have four, went to state award-winning schools in Kentucky. We did it for a number of years. We'd green their high school work hall. We would go and we were very active. And I never saw anything that they did, learned, or were assigned to do that equaled what we received at Tassel High School. I think that is so, you know, it's nice to have degrees and done those things, but what made us who we are is this community. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So we have an opportunity. Our goal is to leave a legacy that will outlive us. And let's face it, that's not too hard to do because we're getting up there. And when it did, it kind of didn't. But we want to leave the idea that because of where we come from, because of what it did for us, it can do for others. And so that idea of paying it forward brings us to our not-for-profit, our nonprofit foundation, where we can give back to the community. And our goal is to do so through scholarships and life kind of activities. So we're growing that. We were able to actually do three within just a few months of our organization. And we were real excited about that. I thought that was pretty cool. We have a lot more ambitions along that line. Not because we want to be recognized, because that's the whole, that's beside the point. The point is, we need to teach the generations that are coming in that they have a magic legacy. This community, or these communities that they come from, that is not found anywhere else. We want to teach them that appreciation and we want to encourage them to do what we're doing and give back to the community. That means they gotta, if they have to leave, they gotta leave their parts here. And we want to help them do that. And we want to encourage them then to pass that on to other generations. We want this legacy to live and live strongly forever. So to quote Dorothy, you can't do this. There is no place like home. There is no place like home. And I don't care where you've been or what you've done, this is home. And as we work on this PBS piece, it's not to focus on the Class of 1973. It's to focus on what a unique place this is and what a unique opportunity it is to be part of. And that helps us in the foundation side, but it also very much helps, we feel, the communities have the kind of folks inheriting the legacy that we're talking about. So we're asking you to seriously consider, to whatever extent that you can do, to help us fund this activity. We have some funding, but we would like to partner with the town and make you part of what we're trying to do. We'll do that anyway. But yeah, so having said that, we're going to turn over to my friend here.
And that's good work, too. Since I've been spending time with these folks, they're just wonderful people and amazing stories. So hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Shannon, I'm with PBS Appalachia. And we're the team, the video production team that has been hired by this amazing foundation to produce this documentary. And not only are we able to produce an incredible documentary, but we're able to air it on our television station in southwest Virginia and our sister station in the Roanoke-Litchburg area. We will also work with the other PBS member stations throughout Virginia to air this full documentary. And then it will all be available for perpetuity on the PBS website and app. So it's a really, you know, great story to tell. We're excited to tell it. And just want to talk a little bit about the team that's going to be doing the video production. It's the same people that produce our award-winning shows. I'm not sure if you're aware of the Pomp Town series with the episode on Tasswell. Very honored, we just got back from Washington. Very honored, we just got back from Washington DC back in June, and we received a regional Apple Emmy Award competing in television stations in Baltimore, Washington DC. It was a beautiful story on Tasswell, so that's the team that's going to be doing it. My role is on the corporate support side, so I work with a lot of sponsorships and do some grant writing, but I'm here to support this project any way that I can, and if anybody needs cards, I'm accessible anytime. You can find me on the website, or if you have any questions, I'm here. We appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, maybe add one thing, that, you know, we get calls weekly about people living in northern states, in California, who are looking to bring their families to a morally and ethically conservative, quiet community that's very safe and very close. We get calls every week about people trying to move in and settle in our area, and I'm not sure how this documentary is going to be distributed, or how broadly it's going to be distributed, but I think there's an economic development opportunity for the town. You know, the town needs more warm bodies. And, you know, people are looking for places to stay, or to spend a while, what they, where they're living, you know what I mean? And those that are new to here really like here, and I think that's something else to consider.
And that's an interesting point, though, with our distribution capabilities, it can be seen a lot.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're going to partner with us to, you know, apply for grants or whatever, I think it'd be very helpful for the town and the county.
So I would suggest working with Leann and us coming up with some sort of plan to see how we can move forward in any way we can help.
Yeah, I also want to hear about Dave's wild life, because I thought you were born here.
Larry, do you have?
I don't have anything, I'm a little.
She went that way.
I would just, Sharon, you all know Larry and Sharon here, and then Raymond drove from Athens to the D S. And this is pretty much a lot of our board directors here, and I think Jerry and he have been common up here.
Yeah, we heard all about it, sitting back there, yep, that was my seat. These tables weren't here when I was.
And Leanne used to sit on the table.
She did.
And now she's over here. So see, we've got the seat now.
I would suggest just working with Leann and anything she needs from a council approval perspective, she'll reach out.
How present.
Wait until we free this week. You just called me and you were working.
I'll be coming.
We thank you all, just hope you, you know, you're serious.
Absolutely. And when I said, everybody knows about Tasswell, where I've been, I did say if it was famous or infamous.
Thank you very much. Thank that much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Enjoy. All right, so moving along, next on the agenda is the Tasswell Youth Football League donation request for tackle wheel. I understood the emails correctly, there was a motion on the table, but I never saw a second. Quarter board, Dave, and that doesn't work.
But I'm coming back.
So we just received a, not necessarily a donation request, but a request to see if we would be interested in helping purchase a tackle wheel for the Tasswell Youth Football League. They were sent out an email, there was a motion, Councilman Fox did make a motion. It was not seconded, do you want to take any action?
I'll say three.
You made a motion of a third. We do not have a second.
Come on, second.
Could, is it possible to just give them a dollar amount and they can purchase however much tackle wheel they can with that? So the tackle wheel that they have here.
Hey, Leann, hold on one thing.
Sister, my son-in-law broke it. You have an interest?
You just set it on you in the day. I have a battery.
It's all her fault. I didn't worry that my sister broke it.
Okay, so they were finally stood, they were three.
Three, four, three, fifty.
Yeah, three, fifty a piece.
This is where the people are going to have now, you've got to.
So based off the donations that we did last year, we went above and beyond what we expected to do on donations last year. I would like to try to rein some of this in. I would be willing to make a personal donation to this, but I don't necessarily feel like, I would like to try to scale back on some of the donations that we have done. So I'd be willing to donate fifty dollars to this cause of my personal money. I'll go ahead and say that. And I'll do a hundred, so I almost got one.
I got walls down.
You made it for the kids, Dave.
My grandson's on the football.
So we've got one fifty.
I'll go with you with Joe.
So we're two. So we're at three hundred, or what was it? One hundred, two hundred?
Three fifty.
Three fifty? Math's not my strong suit. I guess that we've got one, and we've got.
Who gets Leann?
I'll work it up a hundred.
So we need seven to get two, so we're getting close. And they didn't ask for three. No, they didn't ask for it. Or they asked for help.
They asked for help.
So if we've got, what, four fifty now?
Go your path.
You'll see where we're going. One hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred.
I'll do a hundred if you don't mind.
I'll say a hundred.
Take seven hundred.
A hundred.
Five hundred.
It's good for two. We get one.
So where I was going with, if we're sitting at five hundred now with the town, if he rescinds his motion with the town, would council approve the additional two fifty so we can get two of them? So it's two fifty from our budget, five hundred from personal donations. But you've got to rescind your motion.
Yeah, or amended.
Or amended.
No, it's not seconded, it dies. It's not seconded, so it's not seconded, it just dies.
Sorry.
So we can make another motion.
Make another motion.
Make a motion that we, with our personal donations, we match that up to seventy-five, seven hundred dollars, which would mean two hundred and fifty of that would come from the town in addition to our personal donations.
So I get second.
For the two hundred and fifty. Second for two hundred and fifty.
And you made the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion.
I know, but I said, that I was clarifying.
Oh, yeah, you hit that. Yeah, I can get behind that. We affected enough kids with this, the league is important, and that's not, that keeps them below our max donation. Like I said, I don't want to necessarily stop donating to good causes, but I do want to rein in some of our donations that we've done, and this is a youth program that benefits a lot of kids in the family, so I think it is, you know, deserving of a donation. I was just trying to pull back a little bit. From a thousand? Definitely from a thousand, but even from three fifty, that, you know, I think is, so, I'll say this. All right, so we've got a second, in a discussion.
One and three.
Well, you can, personal money, so do three hundred and fifty more.
I was not something like getting it for one.
Perfect. So we've got a second discussion in favor of providing two wheels utilizing our personal donations and two hundred and fifty dollars of town money, stay so by saying aye? All opposed, stay so by saying nay?
One, three.
All right. We're good.
And cannot personally say thank you all for donating, so thank you all for the team with the kids, I appreciate that.
Expecting to win some. There are expectations. Okay, so next item on the agenda is appointment of new clerk of council.
Yeah, you skipped the whole page.
He was trying.
Trying to get it. So next is SWCC Festival, the Arts Donation Request, Commander Reagan.
We have received a thank you for our previous support of the bill. This is something that we have done historically every year. This is for an event that will be happening in April twenty twenty-five, so it's within this budget year, it's not until next calendar year. They are asking that we continue our generous annual donation of five hundred dollars to support their program.
Do they have any other information, like how many people attend this, how many people?
It's pretty big. It's seven days, it's a full week. It is a full week, and this year is their thirty-year kind of commemorative mark, so they do plan on having a lot of big kind of events for that week. I don't have a number, but it does say K through twelve students from all three counties that are within the southwest Virginia Community College region will be included, so.
That gives us an idea of the number, at least.
It's something historically too.
Yeah, we've done it historically for five hundred, and we did it in twenty-three for five hundred, so this is something that we pretty much, we knew it was coming and we've built it into our budget planning.
I'll motion to make a donation.
I'll second it.
All right, so we've got a second, in discussion. All in favor, the donation request for SWCC Festival of the Arts, they say so by saying aye? All opposed, they say so by saying nay? No? All right, one now, two now, and we get third. Okay, Phil, my good cares, right? Or, did you, I didn't hear you. Did you say? Okay, so we got three, some more?
How many, eight?
Three, two, one. Yes, three, two. All right, so the motion carries. Next on the agenda, local business recognition, unfortunately, there's none next month. So next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for council meeting on June fourth twenty twenty-four and July ninth twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to approve.
Make the motion approve.
Second. In discussion. All in favor of approval of the minutes for the council meeting on June fourth twenty twenty-four and July ninth twenty twenty-four, stay so by saying aye? All opposed, stay so by saying nay? All right, motion carries. So next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for June twenty twenty-four and July twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Second. Second, two. And discussion. Yep, in discussion. Yeah, just a quick question from Miss Leann, on the audit for last festival year, when do we expect that?
So we have pre-auditors coming next week. We have regular auditors coming the third week in September. They should usually have it back to us around the first part of October. They will be here to present to you all usually November December. It's been December.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've got a second, so all in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report for June twenty twenty-four and July twenty twenty-four, stay so by saying aye? All opposed, they say so by saying nay? All right, motion carries. Next is the committee conference updates, the council member Davis, so you're the planning permission committee.
We had a meeting last Monday, as part of that meeting, we talked about a company that has come in that is working with a landowner to put some solar panels on a piece of property. They are looking to do a siding agreement with us. There was lots of discussion, nothing is finalized, so they pretty much provided some information, and we talked a lot, I have a lot of notes on it. And that's it, it was just that one thing.
Council lady question? Okay, next is going to be our Industrial Economic Development Authority update, and since Chairperson Biden is not here, who's it? Good, Commander Reagan.
So Karen Hallway Day, I apologize, she was not going to be able to be here, but during their IBA meeting last week, they discussed the rainy lot and the possibilities of, you know, something, potential business, selling the lots, they had a good discussion on that. They did have an update from a dialogue and design planning meeting, and what that is, is the Bowlin Alley Lot, and as you all know, the Bowlin Alley has been torn down, there's some plans for that space, and dialogue and design is a company that has been very gracious to design and do multiple designs, and we kind of chose an area that we like and that is being funded through a grant fund through DTQ, so that's a really good project on right now. There are some grant submission plans for our possible farmers market location down there. They did discuss a no taxes incentive, and that's all.
So next unfinished business, the Tasswell Little League request, so we need to ratify the vote. Tasswell Little League had approached and asked to utilize Lincolnshire, we call it fundraiser, and council approved that, we just need to ratify the vote. So did we go through the motion for rat? Okay, so I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
Second. I mean, we did a motion. Joe made the motion.
What the?
Yeah, there was, it was voted on in the email.
Okay, so. So to ratify this, so I need to make the motion, so.
You second.
I'll say.
Right, there we go. So any discussions? All in favor of ratifying the vote for the Tasswell Little League request, they say so by saying aye? All opposed, they say so by saying nay? All right, so next is the Tasswell High School Band Boosters donation request, Commander Reagan.
At our last meeting, we had a donation request for the Tasswell High School Band Boosters, it was for their band camp, it was held at Emory and Henry. I do believe they've already had this, but they were asking for any amount that we would want to donate toward that cause. And the previous year, we donated five hundred dollars.
Is it a moot point now that they've gone?
Yeah. It could be.
I'll make a motion, I know, I got a question. I got a question. Give it to me.
If it's already happened, then that's what they asked for the donation.
If, if it's already happened, then that's what they asked for the donation for, then I don't see the point in making a donation for it. Sounds like they may, may do however it happened. But if they wanted to submit a different request for a different donation, yeah, we can talk about that.
I think one of the things.
You've had a motion.
Yep.
Directly in a second, yeah, so.
In a second.
Nobody did. Nobody did, so.
Are we not allowed to discuss?
You need to have it, that's what the purpose of Robert's rules. You have a motion, you have a second, if you have a second, you'll discuss. It dies.
You don't get a second.
So if you want a second, it's for purposes in discussion, then I can't, then not vote for it.
We just want to give a reason why I'm not second.
You don't need to, I mean, really. Not trying to be a.
Oh, you're right.
That's really what it's for.
So if I can't get a second, the motion dies. So we'll move on to the, to the next. There's the Tavol Torpedo Request from Kami Galinsky. She was here last month.
So she was here last month. She did speak on a lane divider, a lane reel?
Yes.
The flirty things that go out in between the lanes.
I think that's official description.
It is, the flirty. The lane flirty thing. So there were some mishaps with, with their, it was damaged and it's not able to be used. My understanding, again, this was for swim team.
Which is over.
So I think there were some questions last month on, do we look at that as a recreational?
Yeah.
I think that the town provides, because we provide recreation, or is it something that the swim team has provided?
And I could not find record if we had purchased before, or if it was like a day purchase, I could not.
Do we know the cost?
I have that.
Looks like nine hundred.
One second.
So just, we just have to draw out the delineation, is it something we're going to consider rent department property? When we maybe use the right budget? Or is it something that?
I would think that it would be something that would be up kept as the pool was.
Who maintained it? That'd be my question, who maintained it?
Who does the soccer goals?
Yeah.
We did?
We bought the soccer goals, we keep the soccer goals, we.
The cost was two thousand dollars. It was about, about ten years ago, and it's been repaired three times.
So I guess we could like.
Yeah.
Say that again?
It's got to get lifespan of.
Yep. So do we want to move forward and?
I think that that would be under the direct department budget as part of the maintaining of the pool.
I like it.
Yep, good.
I mean, and, you know, we're in, getting ready to go into pool maintenance season, and in the spring before it opens again, so. Is that a recreation budget? Yep.
So who wants to put that in a motion?
I don't know that we have to.
You can, it's one where you can decide there's been a request, we just defer it, let's make the motion, we defer to put it in the recreation budget and let the management handle it. Motion second, vote done.
I'll make a motion that we refer to the recreation department, put it in the budget.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of moving the purchase and maintenance of this to the recreation budget, say so by say and I?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by say may? Alright, so this probably won't help them out much this season, but follow on, we'll be good. So next, the Tavol Community Health for Innovation, ratify the vote. So I don't recall an email, who made the?
I think I made the motion, I believe. I'll make the motion again.
I'll say.
But who?
I'll second.
Who?
I'll second it.
There we go. Any discussions? Alright, so all in favor of ratifying the vote for the Tavol Community Health for Innovation Project, say so by say and I? All opposed, say so by say may? Alright, so that's ratified. So next, the current pilot, pilot's going to give us a lock in to the effective time of challenge.
This is the same thing you go through every year, guys, ladies, with regard to the General Assembly amendments to eighteen point two dealing with general misdemeanor offenses, and also for six point two in dealing with traffic enforcement DUI. But basically what you have to do is listen to me and I'll raise a destiny branch. Peter, name of the Council of Town and Tazal Amendment, section sixteen dash two, adoption of state law R four one, chapter sixteen, the motor vehicle traffic ordinance of Town and Tazal being the same hereby is amended as follows. Sixteen dash two, adoption of state law pursuant to the authority of forty-six point two dash thirteen thirteen, code Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. All the provisions and requirements of the law for common law within the containment title forty-six point two and in R two, which is section eighteen dash two, eighteen point two dash two sixty-six, and what follows from, of chapter seven, title eighteen point two, code Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, except those provisions and requirements of laws which constantly shall be are hereby adopted and incorporated into this chapter and made applicable within the Town and Tazal. References to highway of state contains some provisions and requirements hereby adopted shall we aim to prefer the streets, highways, and above the ways from the town. Such provisions and requirements are hereby adopted, metodus metondus, and made a part of this chapter as fully as those set forth in late Terry and shall be unlawful for any person within the Town and Tazal to violate, fail, neglect, or refuse to comply with any provision of title forty-six point two or R two of chapter seven, title eighteen point two of code Virginia, which is adopted by this section. The Council of Town and Tazal that's hereby adopted opposed to same entities for violation and provision requirement hereby adopted as opposed for similar events under title forty-six point two or under R two of chapter seven, title eighteen point two of code Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, subject to maintaining limitation of the charter of the Town and Tazal. Need you to adopt this as an amendment to the ordinance, or as again, as adoption of state law, excuse me, and to adopt it as an emergency to take effect immediately. So we need two motions and two passes, please. And roll call vote.
I will make a motion to adopt this.
Now, can you state of law, section sixteen point?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, so all in favor, sorry, any discussion? All in favor of approving the, what is the adoption of provision of Virginia State Code, sixteen dash two, say so by say and I?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by say may?
Does that need to be the roll call vote, or?
Was that the roll call vote, or was it the emergency?
Do for both.
Okay, so need roll call vote, sorry, Brad?
If it's you name or somebody, nobody opposed, it's, that's good.
It's good, okay. So next, we need a motion to have it effective, effective as an emergency to take effect right away?
Yes, I like that.
So move, second.
Any discussion? Alright, we're going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Fox?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember B, say aye. Jonathan, I could not think your last name, that's like.
Brainwash is worse.
The eyes are already gone. I guess the mind's coming next. Alright, so new business. Mr. Chilwell just sat here patiently, and I'm sure he's going to bring it. It's wonderful, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, first time I saw up in the coast.
Leanne, grab the checkbook.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Young, I'm Mr. Young, Pam Young, and I want to go back to the group from nineteen seventy-three. I graduated in nineteen seventy-three, about three hours down the road, basically. But I came in February nineteen seventy-eight out of Park and State Police, I was approved, and I called a conference, it did, however, it was a great place to live. Mr. Mayor, I got a couple of things I want to run with council, and I want to update you, but I want to get hopefully some guidance on how we should perceive of Ms. Leanne. And I want to congratulate you, Ms. Leanne's doing a wonderful job for the town of Tazal. As you know. Uh, no, she did not. She did a wonderful job since she's been with Tazal, continues to do so. As you know, on June the fifth, we opened bids for the second time on that material cost for the R four sixty, what we call the water line replacement in pain. The same contractor, or same supplier bid it the second time, and he was actually about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars below what our estimate was. Because with construction costs, it's just like trying to throw a dart and hit something, the nutty out. You just don't know how many you're going to get to bid it. You don't know what it's going to be. As contractors told me, labor's going up forty to forty-five percent, so. But he's two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars below our estimate. That was our engineer's estimate. Overall, I had Ms. Pam hand out to you what we call a project, you give me a project status report. This is a report that we keep internally that can show where every dollar that we know of on this budget has been spent to date, and what we project to be spent in the future. If you look down at that lower left-hand column, it shows with this bid and where we saved some funds on other things, we're about ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars short to be able to pay for all the materials. Now, the town, and I think Leanne has supplied the Thompson Foundation, money is for that, and hopefully we can get it, but I do want to point one thing out to you. If you look at this middle column right here, cost to date, once you award the project and you close the loan, your first drawdown you can make, you can get reimbursed that ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars that you paid several years ago for upfront design. That cost right there could be applied back if you don't give any other funding, if you so choose to. But what happened, we had a fly, jumped up. And in all fairness, when VRA, the General Resources Authority, does this for the Health Department, they look at your financial situation, they look at your existing debt. The Town and Tazal has some existing debt that goes back to nineteen eighty-three with Ruabelt. Ruabelt raised their arms and head and hands and said, we want parity. It's nothing that's untied, we dealt with it. But to be frank with you, I thought that had already been addressed. It happened. Robert Hilt, who's a wonderful individual, works for Ruabelt in Lebanon. Once he got the information, he sent an email to Leanne, but it to her old email address. So she didn't even have that information. He was outlining what he needed for his agency to start the parity request. Since that time, the state no longer does it in the state. They have to send it to their national office in Iberland. He said, once you get the information to them, which they have now, it takes them sixty to ninety days to get approval. Now here's the dilemma with you. The contractor, or I keep calling the contractor, the supplier that supplied the bid, his bid is only good through September fifth. And what that means, if he's not agreed to extend it, you'll drop right back to re-advertising them again. And I'm not sure if you'll see that good price. He has told us verbally, he drove all the way from Roma to sit down with us. We had Leanne and Susan, Donnie, and Pam and myself got on a conference call with Robert Hilt and Chris Copier Bond Counsel, and walked through this and shared with them the importance of trying to expedite this. Robert wouldn't give you any promises, it's just totally out of control of him, you know? But what I thought, and this is just something I want y'all to consider, you don't have to do it. The likelihood of RD not granting parity is pretty big. Chris Copier Bond Counsel even acknowledged that. And before we lose this bid, I was wondering if the town, now what we're talking about is maybe two or three months. Then, once you get parity, you can close the loan, you draw the money down, you're off and running. And then as material, as the materials come in, I think he's doing it monthly, Leanne, he's not going to do a month sum. Request.
Saying that we can do it.
Just monthly, yeah. What I was wondering, to keep that bid, is if the town, now it's a, it's a gamble, it's ninety-five, ninety-eight percent chance you will get your parity. But for me to sit here and say hunkshin, I can't say hunkshin on nothing other than we all going to be paying taxes. The likelihood of that happening is pretty big. But if the town would consider fronting the monies for the first two or three months for what materials that come in, and then once you, you get the material price locked in. Now, Alan told us that he can probably go to October on the pipe, but he can't get the commitment on the baths and the feedings and everything else, and those are the cost of that. So, but if you agree to front the money as the first two or three months, and keep them received, and then once you get it done, and get the loan closed, then the parity, then you can draw out, get that reimbursed right back to you with the first drawdown request. All this does, puts you in a little bit of gamble, I'm going to be able, Mr. Brad, on his expertise too on this. I'm scared to death to tell you that those prices will be better, because I've not seen them any better. I've not seen construction costs come down like that. I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can help the town lock this pricing without having to go through. Now, the other thing I want to share with you, Anthony Hess is the new manager over the Construction Financing, FCAT Financial Construction Program. He took Kelly Ward's place. Kelly is now Deputy Director of DQ over their finance. If Alan wasn't there, probably two weeks, I mean Anthony, and he called me, and he said, Rick, I'm getting some real pressure from Washington DPA to pull these funds back that's not been spent. And he said, y'all going into your third, almost fourth year. I said, yes, sir. I said, now, Anthony, I said, do you know, of course, that we brought this to the attention of Ms. Ward on two different occasions, and got her approval to put it home? He said, I don't have any records of that, can you go back and find the files? And we did, we found the emails, and he has acknowledged that. But I will be the first to tell you, if we have to delay it and tell them we're going to have to re, I'm scared to death they're going to say, well, you don't, we don't pay the money. They don't call pulling, they call it bypass. So that's another concern I have, and I'm not trying to scare you into doing anything tonight. I just want to make sure you all fully understand what we're faced with right now.
What's the estimated cost for the first couple of months?
I'd say, Joe, it can't, I'd say a hundred thousand or more. He's going to, what he's going to be doing right now, the first, is Donnie's going to be cutting the asphalt, ordering the twelve-inch pipe, and then he's probably, is Donnie going to do the asphalt first that across the hill, Hardee's Hill, and where he's going to start with it?
Yeah, we're going to start there, the pump station of Corry Street.
Yeah.
Go down the hill to.
That's what I was thinking, so he's going to have to get the asphalt, and he's going to have to use gravel. So I would say, depending on how fast he works, a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I don't know, I'm just none of my business, if y'all got that type of money sitting around, be able to do that a lot, but it would sure, I think, save you some money in that road of material price. money in that road of material costs.
There are three phases to this project.
Yes, and now, what they're making us do now, all of it one time, because they want to pull the money.
Okay. I thought we weren't funded through three, and we were gonna go ahead and apply for additional money to get the third done.
We did.
That's the shortfall she's holding up for the third phase.
How?
Yeah, Thompson Foundation, the money.
Could you go ahead and purchase the material and say, "The ring light for the public workplace is, we delay the construction on it. Can we return the assets if they're not used or if we get denied?"
You could. We could ask Cal and mine, Cal and mine for the Cal and Cor and mine.
So, it's like, you go ahead and purchase it, but we're not gonna throw it to the ground and, you know, whatever, scratch it. And then, if this gets denied, then, I mean, there's likely gonna be a cost because it's higher, so it's gonna be truck and trailer load in, transportation. But, but that could be, that could offset a risk, and it could be an acceptable loss, perhaps, if, if for some reason, there's two percent failure of the plant.
Right. I understand. I mean, you gotta look at it very good. Would you even have to ship it here? I don't know if you would.
Pay for it and.
I don't know.
Have it locked?
You can store it, you can pay what they call stored materials, and you can maybe pay for it. The big thing is getting Alan the letter saying, "You are Corvane, you have been awarded the contract." And once he gets that award letter, he can lock his suppliers down into the price he gave, they gave. If he don't have that come Sept- September fifth, he's in trouble. He says they won't hold an honor of the price. And I'm lucky, I can be frank with you, I'm pretty tickled that he's got the October on his pocket.
Yeah.
What's one time is only two weeks, it hopefully.
We'll use these supplies somewhere along the way anyway.
Yeah.
Those are some good questions. We could get back to Alan and talk to him if you want to, Leanne and see. I just, I don't want y'all to think it's a gamble, because it is a little bit of a gamble, but I think in the long run.
We're proving to, let me get the, which agency again, it's DEQ?
No, it's the Virginia Department of Resources, FCAT. And what we're gonna do is approve, if you want to, approve awarding the material bid to Corvane at their bid price, with an understanding that the town recognizes you're going through parity issues with Rule of Albert, and that the town will pay for the upfront cost associated. You don't get paid any labor anyway, it's all forced, and the only thing you'll get paid for is materials. So, whatever materials is brought to the town in those two or three months, you would have to pay for it out of your general fund or water, water sewer fund or whatever. But once it's done, then you can draw it back down and get reimbursed. Am I right, Leanne, huh? Am I, what's wrong here?
We don't get reimbursed for the supplies, we get reimbursed for the labor.
No, no, no. No labor, no labor equipment, all you get reimbursed is the materials.
Materials.
Yeah, that's why we're building it all in-house.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, it's just.
Wrong fourth town.
Not one we just said.
Wrong fourth town.
I was right, I knew we just talked about this yesterday.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, I understand, you got your plate for us. We tried to get, if you remember, Mary, the first bid we got was five point eight million dollars for this, and there's no way we can.
I'll go with Mr. Klein on his decision, putting it out there, bringing his block and heights, get all that in there, pay.
Or let, or let, they, they.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
If you have an award, they just give them a token amount, maybe that will satisfy that, where he can get that award letter and say, "Okay, guys, I'm locked in, now y'all locked in," and then just go to emergency, see how we do.
So, area of procurement and awarding contracts that, I don't know, okay, you go through the area, if we get denied, what process or, like, what's our capability of?
Let me take the other options I keep to do, and I even, I even told Robert Hilt this. He laughed and he said he didn't blame me. You owe about one point three million dollars to the federal government? If anytime you go for a capital expenditure, you're gonna have to get their blessing. Or you can go to your local bank and say, "I borrowed your money, pay them off, and tell them I don't deal with them no more." A lot of folks do that.
And we've just been, uh, discussed it.
What have you seen on rates?
We haven't got there yet.
I think the one in nineteen eighty-three was at two point seven five, Robert told us. I don't know, maybe, maybe a local bank would be able to do better than two point seven five, especially if it's tax-free, or I don't know how they, I've heard that statement before.
We still have twenty years left on it.
But I understand if you want to go buy an orchestra, you can get to do it with that their blessing, that parity.
Do you need orchestra?
I like, we gotta do something.
Well, first, you gotta just, like, know whether or not they'll actually agree to those terms. So, it's like, you have to come back, you have to talk again.
So, can you make phone calls like this week and talk about what we're looking at with him?
Email book?
We did, we did have a work session next week. Would that be sufficient for you guys?
It works.
It works.
Did he cover things up now?
I think as long as we can get a decision by September, September fifth, Alan's, because he's, he's got a hold that big to September fifth, and all his subs too. Subs the county, are they, the county's ready to move forward whenever, whenever the town is. Yeah. But, Mr. Murray, that's all I have, sir.
Appreciate it.
And we also get parity for the sewer line, as we know, at the town too. And I don't want to shock y'all, hang on. I was in Richmond a while back, and I met Kelly and Karen Duran, and I just told them, I said, "Guys, we're gonna need to hold up on money. We gotta put our generator back, we gotta put our UV, and we gotta put our belt press, it's just, it needs replacement. In time to last, what you got much longer." And that coupled with the cost. So, I told them, "Hang on about another six, seven million dollars, and we might wanna be talking to them." I hope, pray God it's not, but I, I'm not gonna sit here and miss it. I had a contractor bid one a long ago, W C, I mean, English Construction. Vice President, Ron Meyers, met with me, and he said, "Labor has gone forty to forty-five percent over the last two years." I had another contractor tell me the other day, he doubled his salary, an early employee he had. And he also, now, I want y'all to think about this, how would you like to bend the news in high school, the contractor offered you a job flagging traffic for twenty-nine dollars an hour? I joked all over. But he came by, he goes, he gets from Canada a little twel-.
Give me a phone number.
Six, seven, two, and they usually get people.
How young do they take? I have a twelve-year-old.
Oh, yeah. How old do they take? Hey, y'all better do this, you ain't here.
Not yet, don't let it.
Good to see you, James. Right, always.
So, next on our agenda is the water sewer rate approval, the rough course of the water line project, wastewater improvement plan upgrade. We need to ratify the vote.
That was me.
So, who made the motion?
I did. So, I made a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven water and sewer rate increases as proven previously, so that the load application process can be upgraded.
Who seconded that?
David.
Hey, any discussion?
This one's free. No, I'm trying to text.
So, we're gonna, so we have a second, no discussion, so we're gonna, all in favor of approving this water and sewer rate changes, states of West End, aye? All opposed, states of West End, aye? All right, so that is done. Try to get this about an hour ago. Appointment of new clerk of council, Madam Reagan.
So, as you all are very well aware, I wore many hats for the last few months, and while I have enjoyed being clerk since two thousand fourteen, we need to select a new clerk. And this is, this is technically on the next month's agenda, so we can kinda do all our new employees at one time, but we do have our new treasurer, Jessica Hayes, with us tonight, and I would like to recommend her as our clerk.
I'll make the motion.
Outlet, outlet we needed. Do we have a vote on that, if it's personnel?
You are a point clerk.
You are a point clerk, I need your.
Yeah. So, we gotta motion this session.
Any discussion? Make your little nurse. All right, all in favor of appointing Jessica as our clerk, states of West End, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West End, aye?
And one more thing before we move forward. I wanna take a minute and thank Sabrina, because Sabrina has been a trooper all through this. She's been all her meetings, eight minutes minutes for me, I sit there and type them up, and I really appreciate it.
Oh, gosh, that's good. You got her on.
They're gonna live.
Move it up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I was gonna do it next month, but, so, our newest town treasurer, Jessica Hayes, and our newest accounts payable clerk is Sabrina Scolli. So, next month, we will have, hopefully, another new face, and I'm really excited about this change in upcoming personnel, and it's been a lot during this last year, but we've grew a lot, and it's a good thing. So, we're gonna get there, we're gonna keep just chugging along, and we're, we'll be good.
And spirit of the Olympics, you passed some.
There we go.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to both of you on your role.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Sorry for the frustration. So, next, budget amendments. Do I go to Madam Reagan, or do I go to the treasurer?
Well, it was a combination of the two of us, but if Jessica wants to take charge, I'll help her.
Yeah, help me.
Okay, so, Jessica and I both have prepared some amendments. This is going for our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This is our last budget amendments. Like I said, we should have pre-auditors coming next week, and it's just to tighten up the budget with little places we went over. I do want to bring something. Councilman Klein had asked a question about one of the water fund budget amendments. And it was a very good question, and if you don't mind, I'll take just a couple minutes to explain. So, there's a request for our water fund true-up, and it's a hefty amount. So, what this is, the PSA owns the water plant. The water plant's in our jurisdiction, and every drop of water that goes out of that plant, we pay for. It goes through our distribution system. So, they charge us for every drop of water. Well, we have master meters set up that go into the county, and those master meters allow us to bill them back what goes back into the county. So, our auditors give us a rate to bill. At the end of the year, we do what's called a true-up, and we get actual costs, you know, what was the maintenance, what was the chemicals, what was the labor, that type of thing, and we kinda say, "Hey, we paid you too much, or we haven't paid you enough." And we true-up, and that's what that is. So, they essentially paid us a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we paid them a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
We lost.
We lost, yes, we did, but.
How do we know that, yeah, that's his very red hat, how do you know that they're charging you exactly?
Our auditors do a true-up audit. It is separate from our regular financial audit, and we do this, like, every January.
And we wanna add, so somebody else is checking to make sure that it's right.
I mean, if I could go to PSA and say, "Oh, hey, you owe me two hundred thousand dollars," that'd be lovely, but we do have people that check it.
Was there anything else on the budget amendments that stood out to you as something that, like, maybe we should look out for, this upcoming year? Don't say here in your domain, it's weird for Trump.
Something that has is on here that I think we've already tried to rectify. Moey does have a pretty significant amount requested, however, that's kind of when we were using another outsourced company, and now we are doing it in-house ourselves. So, I do hope that that will kind of come back into airplay until there.
What was it, what flavor? You got one twenty-four?
Yeah.
One less.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, any motion to approve?
Please.
The budget.
Motion to approve the budget.
Second. In discussion. All in favor of approving the budget amendments, states of West End, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of West End, aye? All right, budget amendments approved. Next on the agenda is the Back of the Dragon OTR twenty twenty-four Southwest Virginia Tourism Award, Outstanding Festival of the Year.
So, I was able to attend our Southwest Virginia Tourism Award, this little conference held over the weekend last week, and while we were there, we had some sessions that we went through and heard some topics that could help us kinda learn and hear more tourism toward our area and little tips and tricks. And we also had a luncheon where there were various awards given out, and I would like to say a very big congratulations to Back of the Dragon and OTR. They were awarded for the Outstanding Festival of the Year, a festival in two or more days. So, very big congratulations to them. I think that speaks volumes for them, and just great job.
All right, so, right on, next, the California Day Dig Grant, Madam Reagan?
So, something that came up back when we were looking at doing our budget for the fiscal year that we're in right now. There had been a dig grant that the Tasswell Today had been awarded, and one that it stands for is a downtown improvement grant, and this is through DHCD. And this was for a fifteen thousand dollar matching grant, and I understand that our previous administration had spoke to Tasswell Today's previous administration and gave a letter of support. We have been able to find that documentation where the letter of support was. However, there is no documentation that we can find. Um, however, there is no documentation that we can find on the air side that says we would put up $15,000 for the matching grant portion of this. So we have received a letter from Tazwell Today, um, from their president, Nathan Thomas. And it is discussing the, the Dig Grant. It is asking if, if we would possibly cover the $15,000 matching fund that's required. Um, and I would like to open it up for discussion if you all would care to do that. Like to state that I have a conflict of interest in this, so I'm recusing myself from discussion.
To open it up for discussion, um, then this grant, and I have the, I sent it back out to everybody because we were talking about this, this had been some time ago, this was back in March, and you know it back. I contacted Pastor Nate earlier today, so I'm thinking that this, and I don't know, correct me. Uh, this grant money looks as if it was going to be remitted December the 30th of '23. Do we know whether the funds were received?
As far as I can tell, $15,000 was received and not downed, it isn't touched.
Okay.
Which is, which is on purpose.
Right.
As we get into discussions, um, there's something, there's something up front.
Yeah, that's on.
Couple of discussions have taken place between Tazwell Today and DHCD, about, DHCD, excuse me, about repurposing of that grant to include both more casual, uh, uh, project down there and back here with transportation issues, uh, with some other options. That's just very preliminary. Um, and as far as, just what I looked at today, and this was a little later in the day, so forgive me if I'm not super well-versed, um, there's a, a final report from this grant due November 15th, but it's my understanding that DHCD is agreeable to push that back as they had a previous grant supporting on it for work. So that's, I'm a little up in the air, but the November date, which is three months away, is not nearly as critical as it seems, since they're willing to work with us. But I didn't know that when we spoke earlier.
Yeah, okay. And by putting, so you took away the block grant for more Tazwell?
I think so, yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know if they would go with it or if we would be able to use that grant to work with it somehow. I don't think the funds would be combined, but there'd be a partnership or a working relationship at least. Is, is my understanding.
Is there a, any type of deadline that they've given you that is approaching?
No, other than November 15th, which I think we're going to ask to be pushed back. My guess is, if I may speak freely, in all of the transition of the end of 2023 into May of 2024, this was up in the air. That's not an excuse by any stretch of the imagination, but that is my guess as to why we're now saying, oh, we need to, this, this should have been done. Um, again, not an excuse, just I'm positive those are the way things have happened in a, a transition and not having an agreement signed with the town, and we don't want that to happen going forward. But we also can't change what wasn't done.
With, uh, I mean, let's say these, these two, you know, the North Tazwell project and this project don't, say doesn't carry out, what would be the intent of these funds?
Then I'm assuming that we would go back to the original plan, which was for, oh my goodness, something involving the mini park and something with the green space. I don't have those details in front of me, but it was a exploratory grant with some funding coming in for some improvement projects, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Alright, I expressed this to you when we were talking on the phone earlier. One of the, a few examples of, of areas where I think as a local government can improve. Before, and this is probably around 2019 timeframe, we, we had a design improvement plan that was created for downtown Main Street. It cost, this is estimate on it, north of $20,000. And I asked Manager Dave back when I was on the IDA, well, what do we do with it? We didn't do anything with it. It's like, oh, we spend this money, you know, to go create these things. You know, another area and example of where we can do better in creating consolidated plans that are able to be stacked up and knocked down. Another example of when efficiency has occurred was with spending money. It was a PDOT loan that we had to pay back for road improvement down at the Little League building. Uh, one of my chief concerns on, I think it's great that the grant's awarded. Uh, I think that any improvements that we can see downtown are phenomenal. Uh, where I, and this is, I said this back in March, so it's the same message. Uh, where I'm concerned about spending the $15,000 to do a planning design grant is where it fits into our capital stack and our capital planning. The next week, we're actually having a meeting to discuss our future and, and what vector we're going to be on and where we're going to be aiming at. And what I would hate to see is a repeat where we, we spend the money, we get nice designs, but we don't have any follow-through, or we don't have a plan for which grant agencies that we're going to contact and how we're going to raise the capital to see the project through. So I'm not opposed to it, but I do think if we tabled it through our discussion next week, and if we're not against the deadline of November 15th, we might be able to collaborate and come up with a, a concept that puts that project in the center of, of other projects that we're aiming at. And could enable us to kind of have more resolute support moving forward, uh, by having a comprehensive plan.
Well, then let me just ask, what do, what does Tazwell Today need to do between now and next Thursday?
I, I think something that would be helpful if you're looking to amplify the information would be to, alright, one of the specifics for how this can be incorporated into the block grant, uh, with North Tazwell.
Just to be clear, that may exist somewhere, I could not find it on our shared drive in the time I have. I don't want to act like it's not done, I do not know. Forgive me for that one.
Yeah, no, 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 and it's, it's just part, you know, sharing information with us to let us know like what, how it would look like. You know, whether, what the duration is, if it's not November the 15th, and like, when is the, when does this thing turn into a pumpkin and you have to have a delayed product? That could be helpful, uh, because we definitely don't want to set you up to be in an obligation that, you know, may, Tazwell Today may not be able to withhold. So, not saying no, maybe we can table until next Thursday, have a discussion, press for it. But that's what I would like to do in this set.
It works. Unless there's any objection. The next item is this, set council work session for Thursday, August 26th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
There we go. Oh, any discussion? All in favor of staying in the council work session, Thursday, August 26th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. I assume the town hall, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright.
We put up one hour time, one moment. Bring your dinner.
That's right, bring pizza. The, uh, next is option for surplus, Commander Reagan.
Back in May, we sent some items to you all to consider, set it up for a surplus option. And, um, there is one item from that option that we actually did not send at that time. You all have already approved it, it was one of our garbage trucks. Um, so it will, it will be sent to this one because you all have already approved it. Um, the police department does have a tourist that they would like to send. And also, and I mean, there will be a bit of war on this. A golf cart with black and, and green flags for your little tower.
Also, I, I did reach out to the parents' club, uh, the football parents' club, because they use our good golf cart all year long for, for season. So I reached out to them, they'd already asked me if they could use it this year. So I offered if I could get it approved that they could have this golf cart. It needs a carburetor adjustment is what it is. It either goes so slow that you have to push it, or it goes so fast that you get killed. And they don't want that, they just want us to provide the good work and it cares up for us to fix it. So it did make me a little upset, uh, I have not heard back from them, but there is a possibility, if they do reach back out to me, is it okay that we can do a donation of that to them?
So how about I make a motion that we donate this said golf cart to the Tazwell High School.
I think it's the football parents', uh, booster.
Is that what they'll have, do they have their own golf cart?
Yes. Sounds great.
I'll make, I'll make second that motion.
We are good.
Oh, sorry.
There just needs some discussion. And so this will just be for the donation, we still got it per, we can, we'll make another motion right before the, before the group. Okay, so any discussion on donating the golf cart? Alright, all in favor of donating the golf cart to, uh, Tazwell Football Booster?
It's the parents', I, I maybe, I, I don't know what the correct terminology is, but I think it's the parents', uh, booster of, of the football program that does the concession.
Okay. What Stan says, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright.
So make a motion to sell the cruiser at the auction. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor for selling the police cruiser at auction, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright.
I would like to make a motion that if the boosters do not accept the donation, that we also send that to auction.
I would like it.
Second, Dave.
You can make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of, uh, selling the golf cart at auction, should the boosters not want it? Say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright, so we can go with the direction with that. Didn't see anything miscellaneous, nobody signed in?
I've got something that's been for miscellaneous, it was on the agenda, and then it gets back into the job. And then it got taken off, so it was actually on the agenda for tonight relative to the precinct property for Mary Avenue, for the, uh, mini park. And actually, one of the things, this will bring your attention, it's actually owned by the IDA. So I know that Alan had asked Alan to brought out to speak about it.
Yeah.
So it really needs to go through the IDA relative to the, the lot that against the park. But just so you're aware, uh, when that, the town owns the entire mini park lot, and the actual boundary for that lot all, goes all the way to the wall of that building. And there's a four-foot easement for the staircase, and that's it. And so the lot that's in, that was there between what's now the Marines building, used to be the old Pop Wicker Plut Dog stand back when my parents were, it's been there for quite a while. And you had in the Strauss building, where used to be the, uh, Sayer Brothers, not Strauss, the Sayer Brothers. Sayer Brothers. And then you had your, uh, replica of the old Tazwell High School was there for storage. And then there's the parking that was the lot that was there between that. Well, that whole lot though was still owned by the, the town, the town and then made the IDA, and they actually own all of that. And, but there was an agreement going all the way back to, I think it's 1937, that the lot between the two buildings would remain open for use by both parties and to access both buildings. I know that what was being proposed is they were wanting to try to see if the town would be willing to sell that to them. Um, but they don't, the town doesn't, the IDA does.
I'm talking about that, you know, it's just a driveway, somebody.
I'm sorry.
This is the parking lot.
It's, it's, it's the two, it's, it's the gravel lot that's there between the two buildings.
Well, they don't know all the way to the building, uh, against the.
Yes, the actual lot that the town, the town owns all the way to the building wall.
The IDA.
The IDA, excuse me, all the way to the building wall, and they have an easement for only four feet. They've actually encroached on that by putting new supports for the staircase. So they're actually on the town property as it's now, so the IDA property, as it now stands. Again, that's an issue that needs to go to the IDA, I know it's been on and off. So if Alan speaks, the, you want to, wants to call, they have to go before the IDA.
And this is, so we got that, so anybody that talks to Mr. McGraw or the Marines.
Comes up again, so, you know, it's an IDA, it's a property.
But I was just thinking about, I don't understand what, what you're talking about, Ripstun. This building here, it was owned by, uh, I got it, right here.
Marines own stuff, but the IDA owns this entire thing up to that building wall. So the town owns this, yes.
It don't, Matt, it doesn't trust the other wall, right? That Sharon built it or made it?
No, you all can, the IDA conveyed away basically the wall and a three-foot easement to Sharon Thomas. And John, yeah, too now, yeah, they, they actually, they own, Thomas is now owned, owned the wall. That's not involved, that's not talked about what I'm talking about.
Alright, so it's not.
That is, that's not good, yeah. I mean, it's close, it's, it's close proximity, so it's not, they don't have any ownership interest in that. The town, the IDA owns those lots.
Okay.
That was all, just wanted to make sure.
That, that's good, next, when it was brought up to us, I, I never thought that would be a problem.
And he is absolutely correct, it was on your agenda, and then he said, hey, Lynn, it's not owned by Tazwell, it's owned by, by IDA. That's why I was taking it back off, because it was going to go for IDA.
Perfect, interesting. Alright, so no one signed in, moving right along.
The miscellaneous rescue squad, how, how's that, how's it going?
Yeah, the suit has been filed, I'm waiting for an answer to be actually filed by Brian, Sheriff Pike, because he was the surviving, basically, board member who was by statute called a trustee of liquidation. So I served, got him served, and he hasn't filed an answer yet, I think the deadline runs probably, if not the end of this week, the first of next week. And I've tried to get up with Chase to see if they would file this and agree to answer, because Brian's not objecting any of it, he just sort of got caught in the middle since everything ended back in 2012, and he was the last one on the books in 2010. So he was the last person we could actually get served, but once we get that taken care of, then we're, we're going to ask that the court basically declare me as the special commissioner and then to do a deed that basically Brian will sign off as a trustee of liquidation to convey that property in dissolution from Jefferson Rescue Squad to the town of Tazwell. And now we finish it up.
And you read it like that, or is it?
It's not, yeah, he, he gave, once he got served, he gave it to Chase. So he's done what he can, and I tried to get up with Chase to see if we could expedite things along, because I knew it was all trying to get done. So it's not, it's a matter of if it's going to happen, it will happen, just it's a matter of getting the timing to get it done here. So it's, it's already been, like I said, filed, answered, or is waiting to file and serve, or is waiting to answer. Probably within the next 60 days will I change it.
60 days?
Back to max, yes. Glenn's not here. Say Glenn's not here, make him go.
I, yeah. So, uh, last is council member comments. And entertain, why can't you do a turn?
Let's do a turn.
All in favor of this, say so by saying aye. All opposed.